And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Gollamback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Before we start the agenda, I just want to just remind everyone of the housekeeping items that we have. For each, for each item, we, we do allow speakers on them. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. And I will politely interrupt you at, at three minutes. And if you want to submit full comments or additional comments, please send them to myself or the chief of staff and they will be distributed to everyone. And we do that because we have meetings after this at two o'clock and also to give everyone an opportunity to speak. Thank you very much for your understanding. And now we will start from the top.
Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Ronaldo is on as well. Excuse the, uh, Malanya. It happens to me my granddaughter. She borrowed my laptop. So that's.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Item number one, dance hall license, your decoration destination.
Items open.
This item is open. Councilmember Bowman is here to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I met with this business owner and neighboring businesses. And it seems like an exciting new opportunity for the neighborhood. So we are going to mark this for approval. Thank you.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number two, fare fines and fees, Safe Streets Initiative PR response.
Items open.
This item is open. Um, I believe Samantha White is here to speak on this as well as others. Um, I think Samantha's muted at the moment. Is there someone else who would like to speak on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Samantha. That's a different item. I apologize. Um, it looks like Jolanda Hill is here to speak on this item. Are you here, Jolanda? Okay, since Jolanda is not here, we will, um, at the moment, we will table this item. And if she returns, we can entertain it at the end.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Gollamback.
Item number three, injustice in Buffalo government.
Motion to table items three, four, and five.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. And, and we were actually going to discuss item number three. Council President Pridgen, did you have something to say on this item?
Um, no, I thought that Peter Reese was going to be on. Uh, this will, I know there is a meeting planned for next week uh, to discuss this item uh, with uh, some of the folks who were concerned about it. Um, and so we'll meet uh, next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item number six, inquiry into response time from AMR ambulance.
Items open.
This item is open. Um, do we have anyone from AMR to speak on this item? Okay.
Uh, yeah, yes, sir. Tim Frost from AMR is on. Um, I did get notified of this meeting yesterday afternoon. So I'm not clear as to totally what I'm speaking on, but happy to help.
Okay, I believe this item was, I, there was.
It's mine, Mr. Chair.
Council President, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, thanks, uh, to Mr. Frost for being on. Um, this is really a request. It's, it's in writing of what it is for. Uh, apologize if they just called you yesterday. Um, we have been getting some complaints, uh, really from police more than citizens about response times. And I know that you provide for, or your, your company provides a summary and percentages. Um, however, what this is asking for is for real time data, uh, because before I enter into discussion on uh, what the complaints have been. Um, and I know that it's, you know, your contract will be coming before soon and, or a contract. Um, so I just want to get ahead of this issue, if it is an issue. Um, so I don't know if you have had any complaints from uh, uh, law enforcement or not, but they did come through this office. And several other uh, council members have echoed in um, about some of the um, possible uh, concerns uh, with AMR. Um, and I don't know if you have been made aware of that already, Mr. Frost.
Uh, no, sir. Uh, no concerns have come to us directly. I'll be happy to look into everything and anything you guys have. Um, and just uh, on a point of uh, anecdote, uh, interview of how in, and I was led to that this is more centered around the psychiatric responses, which would be the EMD card or emergency medical dispatch card twenty-five. Um, we'll, we'll look into this, but just so this group is aware, in the current uh, uh, deployment matrix as established by um, Dr. Bart and, and, and Buffalo Fire, uh, these calls would roll under what we would know as a BLS cold or non-emergent response, which um, is a small subpopulation of a much larger call base. And almost every other call would um, prioritize over top of these, which I could see could lead to some perspective of issue of, of response times. But um, please send me uh, the, the, the inquiries over and I'd be happy to uh, to review.
Okay, there is already a resolution. We'll have staff send it over. Let, let me just ask this real quick because I know we have a long agenda. You, you said those calls, uh, like mental health calls, there, there's a prioritization and those are lower on the priority?
Uh, so kind of. So all calls are, are, are set into a particular uh, card set inside of emergency medical dispatch. And, and they're, they're coded by ADI in this particular case. Um, there is sub-determinants, which then determine the uh, uh, life-threatening versus non-life-threatening nature. And I'm, so, so like for the sake of the last six months, ninety percent of all um, twenty-five card, which is the psychiatric card and the EMD card prioritization set um, were of a BLS cold nature. Um, there were other more life-threatening psychiatric emergencies that fell into that card set. But in this particular case, or as it relates to this conversation, a majority of them fell on the non-emergent side.
Okay, yeah, if we, we look forward to that report and um, especially right now. And once, you know, once I got this from uh, law enforcement and their concern and um, you know, where, where their concern is, we're here on these, on, on site. Um, we have all these agreements and um, have you been a part of the discussion? Or are you in the loop when it comes to uh, police response, when it, when it's a mental health issue and some of the changes that have been made? Uh, because this came from, you know, wasn't ju, and I don't, I don't say this disrespectfully. This, this came from some brass um, who are concerned. My concern is, is that everybody's working together or else we have police out there and you have the community, some in the community saying, police shouldn't be at these calls. But if we're not getting a response and a person could possibly hurt themselves or others, somebody has to respond.
No, and uh, understand, sir, and, and, and the reality is, is that in, you know, without use of better words, the, the system is somewhat broken. So similar in circumstances in which um, the Buffalo Police Department wait for us to arrive on scene. Um, we have the, that, that, that cyclical issue and um, the the reality is, is that no, well, I have, I have not been a part of any of those discussions. I was on one meeting several months ago. Um, but I do know that uh, uh, Buffalo Fire and Dr. Bart have been uh, intricately involved, at least in, in, in the meetings from what I'm being told by Dr. Bart. Um, but there has been no further formal um, uh, bringing us in other than possibly our medical director, but I cannot confirm that or deny that at this time.
That's a, that's a great concern, especially when we have gone through a whole year of uh, supposedly pulling all this together. Um, and I'm, I'm thankful that you said, we're honest to say this, that the system is broken. It was that, is that what you said? Or is that what you meant?
I, I, I did, I, I did say that. And um, you know, I, I would like to emphasize in that I think you brought up a, a, a very good point in that somebody needs to respond. And, and at one point, you have the police department who it, there is either an outside force or an internal force where they're not necessarily the appropriate apparatus for these. Um, I would also uh, suggest that, that the ambulance is always not either. And it's coming up with the, is what is the plan for all situations and taking into account the uh, the, the individual impacts of each of these calls on not only the patient, but the responding, whether it's public safety or um, uh, any of the additional response teams to meet the special needs of this particular population.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Council, Council President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but may I comment?
The chair is.
Yeah, Commissioner, you go right ahead. I couldn't see, I just have your name up, so we couldn't see anything, so.
No, that's fine. Uh, and thank, thank you so much for, uh, Tim. Tim, thank you so much for being on the uh, on the call. So I appreciate all that. Now, I know you and I have been talking offline the last couple of days. Thank you, Council President. And thank you everyone else for, uh, giving me a minute to uh, respond or to, or to comment. So uh, obviously we have a great working relationship with uh, with the BPD. And we're in talks with them right now as, as far as the behavioral health unit calls, myself, uh, Dr. Barrett, uh, Deputy Barrett, my whole EMS team. So, and we know the behavioral health unit is uh, fairly new. And uh, I'm attempting, not attempting, we are in talks with the BPD and we're gonna bring AMR into the discussion. They should have been in discussion a, a little earlier. They were a couple of months back, but we need to get all together on this. So the whole behavioral health unit issue is fairly new. In my opinion, it's a, it's a little disjointed, only because they don't have all the partners uh, in the same room. And by partners, I mean, the Buffalo, Buffalo Fire, Buffalo Police and, and AMR. I mean, we're the ones that are gonna get the job done. So Tim spoke a little bit about, you know, uh, the behavioral health unit calls, the type of calls. Uh, we refer to them as low acuity calls, uh, where they are in the queue. Uh, they're all specific, you know, they're all call-specific. You know, some are more urgent than others. Some people, some calls, you know, individual maybe hurting himself or attempting to hurt himself. Obviously, and other, other ones are not so serious. And those are the ones that uh, AMR, for the, and I don't want to comment just on any specific call, but they may take a little longer to get to, only because they're not as serious. So, but all of this uh, will be and can be resolved uh, with those, with the three organizations that I, that I just mentioned. And it's an ongoing process. I reached out to the leadership of, of the BPD and like I said, I'll get AMR in the room, our medical director, Dr. Barrett, who has a wealth of knowledge uh, on these issues, along with my own team. And we'll get this resolved. So it's a complicated issue, but it's not one that can't be fixed. And it will be fixed. And it will be addressed.
Mr. Chair.
Council President.
Um, this is, this is really, and thank you, Commissioner, uh, for your response. This is of the utmost importance. And when I have a police officer say, we tried to stand down, we're trying to move back, but we can't. We don't have the response. Nobody's there. Um, you know, I, I'm not gonna bring, well, I am gonna bring it to pass. You know, we've had situations. It, it's a little discouraging to hear that all of these pieces in, are not pulled together so that when the officers, if they have to respond, or if it's not an officer, if it's a citizen, um, that, you know, I used to be a, a dispatcher for the cell ambulance. So I know the difference in the disconnect where it could be from ADI. And my concern is if ADI has not been brought into this conversation and there is not a, you know, to me, these mental health, uh, behavioral health, uh, issues um, have to be reprioritized or else we're going to, I don't, well, I, no, I'm not gonna say it like that. I want to avoid having another incident in the city of Buffalo in which any type of weapon had to be deployed because we didn't have the right support networks to show up on scene. Um, and, and the reason I'm bringing it up now, we know that the contract is coming up, I believe, for AMR. Um, those things need to be worked out now because what I don't want to see is in a year and there's an issue and AMR says, hey, that wasn't, we, we didn't have it in the contract. We didn't, we don't get paid for that area. It's important, Commissioner. So I would, uh, is there any timeframe that you can give us on when you can come back to this council um, with what has been worked out?
I would, I would ask for two weeks at the most. Two weeks would be great because that would give us a chance to get all the parties together. Uh, at least. Yeah, to get the beginnings of this thing going. Yes.
Because what I don't, and I mean, not just the beginning. I mean, we need an end. We need a plan. We, we gotta, it, it's so.
We will have an outline. We'll, we'll have an outline. We'll have a, we'll have something for you. We'll have a game plan for you. And I appreciate your, your background in this because uh, you know, that real, that really uh, tells me that you know uh, the issues that we're facing. And we'll, we'll be looking at things like modifying calls, uh, the dispatch codes, because the dispatchers are obviously intimately involved in this whole procedure. So we're gonna bring in all the parties, everyone in the room, and we will have a plan and we'll, we'll start to finish and we'll, we'll outline it for you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll have a, we'll have something solid for you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am, um, again, I'm just gonna, uh, brush my sentiments again with my appreciation for this resolution, asking for the actual data, uh, so that we don't have skewed percentages. Now, my question is, uh, based off of what, uh, you said earlier, Mr. Frost, you said that the system was broken. Um, my concern is how many vehicles are broken. Um, I have had uh, quite a few people, you know, personally testify that um, working on those vehicles sometimes uh, would leave them at a loss because they can't use their personal um, electronic devices. And they have to use the devices that are on board. Uh, that poses a problem because if Google can tell them how to get there faster and the navigation systems on these vehicles are broken, then we have a situation. Uh, so if you could just please let us know whether or not one hundred percent of your inventory that is active all have active and working uh, hardware and uh, electronic devices, uh, especially the navigation uh, devices. I would, we, I, I would really appreciate that information so that we can see if that plays a factor at all, if there is any kind of direct correlation between how folks are answering calls, how long it's taking AMR to uh, get to these calls because the, the, the system is broken, but also the vehicles are broken.
Uh, I will look into that, sir. Um, I bet, that, that actual, that direct issue has not been brought to myself either. So I'll have to do an inventory on that. I do know that um, we are scheduled for a complete changeover in uh, uh, it's a, it's an attachment to our dispatch software this year. Uh, the, the manacular, it makes no difference. But um, I do know that's on, on the, on the agenda. So I will get a current status and then I will get a deployment status of anything new coming in.
Okay, uh, when you take inventory on these vehicles, the question I'm specifically asking is if you can give us uh, how many vehicles you have? How many vehicles have in service? And out of those vehicles that you have in service, how many of those vehicles have equipment failure issues or issues that have been reported? Uh, no percentages, please, but just straight numbers. So if there's a hundred vehicles, uh, out of those hundred vehicles, you have seventy-five that are in service. Then out of seventy-five that are in service, maybe seventy-three all have one hundred percent working hardware equipment.
Uh, Councilman, uh, just for a point of clarification, is this uh, AVL or directional-related equipment? Um, or is this a more global of all equipment? Uh, I, I, I'm sorry, I was a little bit confused with that last addition.
Well, and I didn't really add anything. Maybe I just clarified even further, drill down a little bit, just so that you know that I'm looking specifically for equipment failures on the vehicles. Uh, I did mention navigation for an example earlier, but I don't know all the equipment that's on these vehicles. But the reports of vehicles that are in service that may have some type of, to get on them where it need to be repaired because it's out and they're still out on the streets. I, I would like to know those numbers so that we can uh, maybe ask, and whether or not there's a direct correlation between the response times for those vehicles and uh, uh, how those vehicles respond to uh, the calls and how fast they get there.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Uh, if I could, I just wanna, Councilman, I just want to reiterate that, uh, you know.
We have the floor, Commissioner Ronaldo.
Thank you. Uh, I am gonna get all the parties together. Uh, we will have a way forward. Uh, this is an emergent issue, you know, across the country, not, not just in our area, the behavioral health issue. Uh, the fire department itself is having some issues uh, uh, with lipuses, we call them, uh, you know, uh, working with AMR to figure out uh, the way forward as well, as those calls, which are for the most part low acuity calls as well. So everyone is trying to get, trying and wants to get the job done and get it done correctly, you know? Obviously, for the best for our citizens. So everyone's affected. So uh, we're gonna work to that end. Uh, it will be remedied and we will have a plan in uh, two weeks' time, at least in broad strokes, and which will show the way forward. And uh, you can reach out to me, anyone on my team, uh, anytime in between now and then, uh, if you have to ask anyone, if you want to ask any more questions. If we have any uh, that you'd like to discuss. But uh, uh, like I said, we're full partners with the Buffalo Police and with AMR, we consider them full partners. And we will show, we'll, we'll have the way forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Gollamback.
Item number seven, right to know law legislation.
Items open.
This item is open. And I know there, I believe there are several speakers on this. And Samantha White, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Council, for um, for hearing this item today. I'd like to say that there's a clear divide that exists between our community and our police that can't be ignored any longer because of the unrest it creates and the danger it poses to all of us. We can diffuse the tension and heal these relationships with transparency and reform. This committee has the power to restore the public's trust by championing, championing the reform and transparency within the right to know law. This law is not experimental. It's modeled after the right to know laws of New York City and Syracuse. The legislative text was approved by the Minority Bar Association's Criminal Justice Reform Task Force. The test was sent to several legal service providers and other bar associations. I have supplied endorsement letters from the Legal Aid Bureau of Buffalo, the Buffalo Chapter of the National Lawyers Guild. I have also included a press release supporting this legislation from the Bar Association of Erie County, an organization of three thousand attorneys. Those items should be part of this committee's written record. Today, the committee will hear from a number of community organization leaders who want to share their support for this reform. That's because policing actually affects real people's lives. We need reform. We need to change the dynamics between the BPD and our segregated black and brown communities. But the good news is that these reforms will benefit all two hundred fifty-five thousand city residents by making police stops less confrontational for everyone. Today, I challenge this committee to send this legislation to the full common council for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Samantha. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
John Elmore.
John Elmore, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Buffalo Common Council, for allowing the Minority Bar Association of West New York an opportunity to participate in today's meeting. Eric Garner, Freddie Gray, Michael Brown, Breonna Taylor, Philando Steele, uh, George Floyd, our African-American citizens who have lost their lives at the hands of police and who should not have died. Their deaths have awakened our nation for the need for police reform and criminal justice reform. Last summer, there were protests and unrest in over two thousand cities across America uh, because of the need for police reform. The NBA playoffs were stopped when Doc Rivers said enough is enough. America began to understand why Colin Kaepernick took a, took a knee. Buffalo was on fire. The national news was covering Buffalo and not in a way that we like to think about it, the city of friendly neighbors. As an elder member of the Minority Bar Association, and I'm in my thirty-fifth year practicing law, I was asked to be a co-chair of the Minority Bar Association Criminal Justice Task Force Reform, along with two extremely bright young attorneys, Samantha Wyatt and Miles Gresham. The Minority Bar Association of Western New York felt that it was our civic duty uh, to utilize our talents, our experience, our education and resources in a positive way to advocate for criminal justice reform. Today, we are here with the support of the three thousand-member Erie County Bar Association, the Legal Aid Society, the National Lawyers Guild, the NAACP, the Urban Think Tank, several prominent African-American uh, ministers and others asking you to pass the right to know law. Buffalo is the second-largest city in New York, be, uh, be, uh, behind New York City. Syracuse is the fifth. Syracuse and New York have already passed right-to-know laws. Our task force reviewed those two laws. We put together what we believe is the best police practices and drafted a law and presented it to the council in draft form. The law is plain and simple. When a citizen is stopped by the police, that citizen should have the right to know why he or she is stopped. The name of the police officer, how to file a complaint, the city should be required to keep statistics available to the public. The citizen should be given a business card uh, indicating how to file a complaint. May twenty-fifth will march, will mark the, the uh, it would be first year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. On March twenty-ninth, uh, the, the trial of Derek Chobin will, will start. Uh, it's been almost a, a year. We're asking you, the City of Buffalo Common Council, to pass this law with all deliberate speed and no further delays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council President, I know you were interviewed in the Buffalo News about this and spoke about this recently. Did you want to give an update on everything? I know this is something that you had introduced.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, just so that uh, people uh, do understand that we don't have a law in front of us today to vote on. Uh, we did file, the reason we're speaking on this item today is because we did file a resolution that directs Corporation Council now uh, to write the law. And we have requested uh, that by mid-April, um, that the law would be ready uh, for submission to the common council. I think it's very important to hear from the community and um, the, 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 how many people are in favor of this law from lawyers to, and I'm not sure if Reverend Blue, who is on from NAACP, but I believe in support of this uh, to Pastor Gillison, to Sam Rafford, to many people who I may have even missed, uh, because my screen can only hold so many at a time. Uh, but there, this is important, Pastor Kinsler Pointer, um, Taryn McKelvey and others who are on. This is very important. And as I said in the Buffalo News, because a lot of times when we talk about police reforms um, and with the mayor putting out his uh, agenda, uh, I hope to have this included in that reform agenda. Um, the, the support of this, uh, because this is about building community. Uh, I can't, I think it was um, Attorney White who just kind of talked about that. Um, this is really about a community and how we build together. And so reform agenda doesn't mean people against police, police against people. But how do we work together so that when you're stopped, you can, you do know who stopped you and why and be able to identify? So this council so far, I mean, it was unanimously uh, approved for the law to be written. I don't believe that there was one person who objected. So I just want people to know that no one objected uh, at this point to the law being written. And by, by mid-April, we have asked, so we put a date on it, uh, that, that law would come before the common council.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker is Miles Gresham. Miles, are you still here?
I am, Councilman. Thank you so much. I apologize for my casual appearance. Um, I am on uncle duty today. Um, I am watching my niece, so I will be brief. Um, first of all, I want to thank uh, the Council President for making sure that, you know, this law um, doesn't get lost in table. And I appreciate him for setting a, a date um, by which uh, the council uh, will hopefully have a, a draft law before them. Um, just very briefly, um, you know, what we saw over the past year, um, you know, we know that police brutality isn't just something that happens in Minneapolis or, you know, in other areas of the country, right? We, we saw Quentin Suddles getting his eye socket broken over a traffic. or, you know, in other areas of the country, right? We, we saw Quentin Suttles getting his eye socket broken over a traffic stop. You know, Willie Henley was shot by, you know, the same officer who shot and paralyzed another child in 2012. When, when we start to hold these officers accountable, the first thing that we need to know is who they are. You know, that was when we saw a, a member of, of police leadership call a young woman the C-word. You know, we were able to hold him accountable because he was on video and his name tag was there, right? And so that's, that's, that's really important. And I just want to impress upon the council the importance of seeing this law through and making sure that it is not watered down. I know that the police have said that they are concerned about doxing, and certainly we don't want anyone to be doxed. But there is a law on the books that prevents digital harassment. You know, if, if someone, if you, if you curse out someone online, that's a misdemeanor in the state of New York, and I would encourage the police to charge those people so that they could, you know, we could see who's actually doxing these officers. But in the absence of any evidence in support of that claim, I would argue that, you know, it has not shown to be, to have a foundation. And so I would ask that the council move forward expeditiously in establishing the people's right to know who they are being policed by and also establishing, you know, the protocol which dovetails very much with what the mayor has already put out via executive order in terms of stop receipts, in terms of procedures for, you know, notifying the public as to how to file a complaint and also providing for, you know, making a provision in the law to make sure that, that this data that is collected is available to the public so that we can know how we are being policed and how other people are being policed. I, I, it's kind of convenient that I have my niece here right now. She's seven months old. I'm really worried that, you know, when she's nine, she's going to get pepper sprayed. I'm worried that, you know, if she makes a mistake as a kid, she will encounter the wrong police officer and something horrible will happen to her. And, and I shouldn't have that concern in the United States of America in 2021. So I, I encourage the council to move forward on this. I encourage them to hold Corporation Council to the mid-April deadline. Again, I applaud Council President Priggin and the rest of the Legislative Council for voting on that resolution. And we will continue to watch and continue to advocate for this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sam Radford.
Thank you, Council Chairperson. Again, my name is Sam Radford, and I'm, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Urban Think Tank. The Urban Think Tank has, in conjunction with the West New York Minority Bar Association, has deliberated extensively over this, this legislation, and we stand in support of this legislation. I just would like to point out that it's been over four months that we've been in this process now. And so, you know, again, we are happy that we have the mid-April date that we should be expecting something to come back from the Corporation Council. But we, we, what we, we hope is that this don't get held up in the law department. There are some concerns that, you know, in the past, things just kind of get held up because I know there's a lot on the law department's plate. So, you know, from our perspective, we, we feel like the common council would be better served if they had its own lawyer to be able to potentially move these kind of things quicker so that we as citizens are not delayed and would be fair to those legislation that conserve the interests of our community. So again, we stand in support of this legislation, and thank you, Council President Priggin, for moving it to this point. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Anna Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember, and thank you to the committee for allowing me to speak. I'm here as a resident of the City of Buffalo, but I'm also a member of the Bar Association of Erie County and a member of the National Lawyers Guild, both organizations of lawyers that have endorsed the Minority Bar Association's proposed right-to-know law. I would note that the document that we endorsed was a detailed proposal for what the legislation should look like, that I'm fairly certain went to the law department. So they have a lovely template that they can work from. This is not going to be a really heavy lift for them. The legislation as, as, as it was endorsed provides a clear and detailed mechanism for implementing changes in a police culture that has been focused on excessive uses of force in minority neighborhoods, differential traffic stops and a we-them mentality that dehumanizes people who come into contact with the police. The law, which would require police officers to provide the public with notice of the reasons behind their encounters with the police and a written record of their interactions with the police where there's no arrest, would have the potential to increase transparency in police practices, build trust between police officers and members of the public, protect the personal privacy of all people within the city's borders, shield police officers from false claims of wrongdoing, contribute to the efficiency and effectiveness of our criminal justice system and rebuild trust between the Buffalo Police Department and the residents they are sworn to serve. The proposed law seeks to end unconstitutional searches and seizures, to eliminate discriminatory profiling, pretextual stops, racially disparate marijuana prosecution and the use of unnecessary force. It also seeks to eliminate targeting of young people, members of our black and brown communities, the homeless, LGBTQ persons, people with psychiatric problems and immigrants. We're coming up on a one-year anniversary. As Ms. White pointed out, we're coming up on warm weather when more folks come out into the street. We urge you to expedite this matter through the review and public comment process and to enact it into law as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Reverend Blue.
Good afternoon to everyone, to our representatives of the council, to our law representatives and to my, I want to say my friends. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The NAACP is totally behind this initiative. One of the things that we have to look at is that we have, it's, it's sad that we have to teach people to be respectful, especially those who I employ. Police officers are employees of the city. And since I am a taxpayer, they're my employees also. And we have to teach people how to be respectful, how to be polite, how to be cordial, how to interact with people. A lot of times, the escalation can happen when we are civil with one another. This law that needs to be enacted expeditiously will force those who are not civil to be civil. Not only the body cameras, which kind of pick up some of the things, but now they'll be more accountable to the individuals that they are charged to serve and protect. So it's very encouraging to the Council President to what's being said as far as this being happening. I mean, we are teaching people, you can't see this, but this is a pamphlet that we give out. It's the 411 on 5-0, which gives information on how to conduct yourselves if you are stopped by the police, if you are arrested, if they come to your home. We are teaching people how to conduct themselves, but it's a shame that we have to have a law to teach police officers how to conduct themselves. They need to understand that taxpayers pay their salary. So they're beholding to the individuals that they're coming in contact with. The NAACP wants good policing. We're not saying us versus them. We want good policing, and this is one way to ensure that everybody's on an even page when it comes down to addressing one another. This law needs to be enacted upon because of a lot of the civil unrest and the injustice that's been happening all throughout our nation. I am excited that we haven't had as many escalations as others, but that excitement can easily be waned by one incident. So I am encouraged today. We stand with all those who are here to make sure that this law, that this policy becomes a law. A lot of people want to change policy, but they can't change law. So that's why we have to have it as a law. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Kinzer Pointer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable council members, my fellow citizens. I, I don't want to be redundant. My fellow citizens have raised the issue. I just want to reiterate one point. The length of time it's taken to move this is concerning. And I took another look at the city charter. And I wonder if it's time for the common council to have their own legal staff. And I know that the way the charter operates, the Corporation Council is your staff, but I would suggest that it may be time for the common council to have its own legal staff in its entirety so that you are not reduced to children waiting on someone else to fix your sandwich. I'd like to see that. I'd like to suggest that that's something that the council should explore so that when I hear like parents scolding you for the length of time that it takes to move a legal process in this community forward. Let me reiterate simply that you're doing good work where your fellow citizens and partners and, and this particular instance, we cannot be displeased with you moving forward. We just question whether this might be an opportune time for you as the, as the chief policymakers in the City of Buffalo to have your own separate legal staff. And I mean, when they wrote the charter, I'm sure they thought that was good wisdom when they reviewed and renewed the charter just a few years ago. I'm sure they thought, you know, fix what isn't broken. But I would suggest to you, this is an indication that is broken. Thank you again for allowing us to share with you today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item before it is tabled? Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think everyone on this call who is supporting this initiative is long overdue. And, you know, it's a little bit disappointing that the draft resolution for the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Act comes out during this week. You have a few days to make comments. The common council has been in the forefront on a lot of these issues, and many of us have supported many of these issues. And yes, it has taken us some time. And yes, we do need our own attorney. And yes, we're going to push for that because we think it's very important to do the people's business that we can do it expeditiously. So I thank everyone on this call and thank you for your support of this initiative. When it comes to budget time, we're going to need to hear from you again because we will be pushing for an attorney. It's long overdue, and we want real police reform. And what I've read so far is not the reform that we thought would happen in the midst of what's happened to George Floyd and the revolution that was taking place in our streets. But we will continue to be vigilant. We will continue to put forth good legislation that it's not us against the police, but it's against, it's for good policy that makes common sense to improve our police department, to improve the relationship between the police and the community. That's all we're asking for. We don't want to beat up anybody. We don't want to point fingers. But collectively, when we have a kindred spirit to put something forward to make everyone feel safe, everyone feel appreciated and everyone feel that they, when they make a claim or when there's an issue, that they will be given the utmost treatment with quality customer service like you get from some of the police in Canada. I think Council President talked about an experience that he couldn't believe that he had one time. But it's one of those things that when we do good policing and we treat people with respect, I think people will give that respect back, and we just need that opportunity. And it shouldn't be, I think, what Pastor Blue said, we have to teach people that. But unfortunately, we have to do that, and we will do it with, uh, with, with compassion and with understanding of all sides. Nobody, again, we're not trying to create this role or this animosity towards the police and the community. But we definitely have to put things in place, and we can't be resistant to that. Again, when I go back to this item that's going to be sent to the governor, it hasn't gone far enough. We've had numerous conversations on our common council meetings with real reform from advocates, and many of those things aren't in here. And so I'm going to ask the council to put something forth that we could submit in addition to this, because this is not the total picture. We were not even given information about how these committees went. We have two common council members on the committee, and we have not gotten the input that we were expecting from what we've gotten from the public. Many of us have met with many of the advocates about what they would like to see, Brianna's Law, the, the creation of a civilian review board. None of those things are presented here. And so again, this conversation is very appropriate, and I think to have the kind of support speaks volumes for where we're going and that we are on the right track to create a better policing model in the City of Buffalo and hopefully a model for New York State and the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I'll be very, very, very brief. Two things. One is, and Miles brought it up, and I am concerned about the doxing. I have been, I have been contacted by many police officers who have found their address online. And obviously, you know, we're public service servants. Everybody knows where, where we, who are elected, live. But, you know, when you're talking about people who are out there arresting some really bad guys and bad girls, you know, to put their information out there. So hearing Miles say that, I think that's something else that we really need to look at is also the protection because we have some good officers out there, and I don't want to see those officers, when they are doing their job, now feel like they can't do their, their job. If there's somebody out there committing crime, I want to be clear. Then, then if there's somebody else, they should be arrested. They should be taken off the street. And, and I don't think that it's fair to those officers who are really doing their job, doing it with integrity, to then be dragged through the internet. And so I think this, this body needs to look at that because as we protect our citizens, there's some good police officers out there. They should be protected too. Second of all, when we, the discussion on the attorney, and I want to say this because this council has probably, and I hope I don't get in trouble for saying this, in my 10 years or so, one of the most competent attorneys that I've ever worked with on this council. I think so that the public understands, this isn't, when you all were talking about this, it is not about an attorney, a specific attorney. It is about the council, and, you know, I've been pushing this for over a year because we are the legislative body. The legislative body should have an attorney that is only dedicated to the legislative body. And the structure right now, as it is set up, is whatever attorney is assigned to the council. And I think there needs to be several changes because in my 10 years here, I, and my six years as council president almost, I, I don't get to choose who that attorney is. I'm, I got a blessing with our current Assistant Corporation Council, but we don't get a, we just are told who will be the, well, I, I know I've never been asked. And so I think that there's some changes that need to be there, but I know that several council members on this call are advocating that this budget that we would seek for an attorney. And so that, you know, if you look at our legislative committee, and I know our chairman is asking us, get rid of some of this stuff. It is so long of things that we are waiting to be written, and I want to be able to move the legislative process. But I just wanted to make sure that the public knew. Right now, we have a Corporation Council that knows their stuff. But we should have someone who is dedicated to the council only. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Motion to, is motion to table?
Yes, seconded by Council President Priggin.
Take from the table, item 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkowski.
Item number 10, special instrument 75 Avery for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N3R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Priggin, President. So this item is open. I see we have an applicant who's here to speak on three Airbnbs. And right now, we're starting with the And right now, we're starting with the one on Avery. Is the owner here to speak?
Jonathan Flanerlin.
Jonathan, you, you, so right now, we're just talking about Avery. Can you just give us some background information on this specific property?
Single-family house, three bedroom, one bath, about fourteen fifty.
Okay, um, so it's a single family and is this? Just a question, I've received some emails. Um, it's there have been that the police have been called there at some points in the past couple of years. How long have you owned this property for?
I got it in two thousand and October twenty sixteen, I believe.
Okay, so I, at some point between now and next week, I'd like to have a more specific conversation about this based on the, the police going to this property while you have been an owner. Um, but is there anyone else here to speak on seventy-five Avery while we are here? Victor Torres, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, um, there's been, there's been several incidences at this, at the property. Uh, we live right across the street, um, one house over. Um, one of, one of the first incidents, twenty eighteen or was twenty nineteen, guys are urinating off the front porch. I contacted Jonathan, he did take care of the problem. On uh, June fourteenth, eleven forty-nine, and on June twenty-first, twelve-ten, both weeks, I don't know if it was the same people rented it out, but there were people going in and out all night for hours, exchanging bags. People would go in with a bag, they'd come out with a bag. I mean, this was going on all night. I mean, I can only assume what was happening. The last incident was on uh, the thirtieth of September. We had five police cars out there. It was the worst one. One-twenty in the morning, there was fights out here. Girls were fighting on the prop, on neighbors' lawns. I'm sure we're going to have other neighbors talking about it, but that was, and we, we tried calling Jonathan that night, no answer. I mean, we couldn't get a hold of anybody until the very next day. He apologized. I think he, he told them to leave. But the problem, the issue is, we're having to deal with these problems the night of and the day of. So even if he takes care of the problem, we're still having to deal with the problem when it happens. And that's my issue. Not only my issue, but our neighbors, and I'm sure they're going to speak about it too. Um, so that's, that's where we're at. Do you want to add anything?
Just that there's multiple parties that we deal with and we do have work the next day because it happens on weekdays and weekends. And I mean, he does try to respond, but people don't always listen, unfortunately.
And the other issue is too, is people will come in, check in, maybe eleven, eleven-thirty, twelve. And they, at night, they unload their cars, they're, they're talking like it's middle of the day. I mean, this, our street is really narrow. So when someone talks across the street, you can hear it inside your bedroom. And so, I mean, I'm trying, I have to get up, you know, I have to go to work the next day and I'm being awoken. I'm, I have to stay awake until they decide to finish loading up whatever they got to load into their Airbnb. I mean, it's just, it's been a pain in the butt. So that's what I have, so.
All right, thank you very much for the comments um, from the Torres family. Are there other people here to speak on seventy-five Avery? I know there were some people before that had to leave the call that had sent messages.
Yes, Councilmember Farallato, Janice McKinney.
Janice, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Um, um, I've been a resident um, at eighty-four Avery for over forty years. Um, it's been a home in several generations of my family. Um, the trend of Airbnbs is not something I'm against. But I do want the owner to take full responsibility for the upkeep of the outside of their property as well as the inside of their property. Um, again, late night fights and arguments from visitors who do not reside on our street um, is totally unacceptable and we will not tolerate it. It is my hope that the owner will consider putting into place rules and responsibilities that renters must adhere to such as loud music not being allowed after eleven PM or at all, or no large gatherings with loud noise on the front porch. We have residents who have lived on our street who watch out for one another. We have children and grandchildren that we don't want to be accepted, uh, acceptable to these types of behaviors. Um, and we want to make sure that he understands, you know, how would he feel if this type of activity or behavior was going on next door to where he and his family lives? Um, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Janice. Are there other people to speak on this item?
Uh, this is Sean McKinney, Janice's husband. Uh, my issue is with our neighbors spoke about September. That was probably the biggest issue we had with them. It wasn't that they were just noisy and the girls fighting outside. But when you come outside to address it, now their confrontation with us, knowing that they don't live there. They can do whatever and then leave. Um, I'm not opposed of having an Airbnb. I just think there need to be some type of strict regulations and I don't know how that would be done. However, um, it's still an inconvenience to a, a family home on neighborhood. So if he can address that issue, I, I wouldn't have a problem with the Airbnb. But as of right now, I, I, it's not beneficial for anyone in our neighborhood to have that.
Thank you for your comments. And now that we're seeing applications come in for Airbnbs, the city passed an ordinance over a year ago um, regarding Airbnbs. So if a property is owner occupied and the owner's living in the house, then it can be operated as an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast um, without going to the council for any approval. If it's zoned on a commercial street, then it can be operated as an Airbnb without any approvals because there are different expectations of commercial streets to residential streets. Um, and then if it is on a residential street like Avery, a special use permit is required if it is um, not owner occupied and the house is not zoned, single-family according to the green code. So that's why we're here. And I just wanted to see if there's anyone else to speak on this item before we get to the next.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, is this the Lawson family?
Yeah, my name is uh, Marcus Lawson. I live at eighty-three Avery Avenue myself, my wife and my two young daughters. I've only been over here for about uh, five years and like, I'm going to echo the same thing as my neighbors did. Uh, September was the worst and it was actually my lawn that the young ladies were fighting on. Uh, when I go to work, I'm gone for hours and hours. And sometimes my wife is alone by two daughters. And when they see, when my wife sees five cop cars in front of our house, it's quite concerning there because she know I can't come home and, I mean, I'm pretty sure she's capable of protecting my daughters. But still, that's a, that's something that I don't want to get a phone call for. Um, like I echo the same thing of my neighbors, I'm not against Airbnbs, but um, I'm, I'm a little bit more uh, depressed at how Airbnb works. There's certain things that you can do, like if there's somebody who just joined Airbnb on a, this past February, you shouldn't be renting to that person because their account is young, they don't, there's no reviews on it. It's kind of like an Uber. Like if you got Uber driver coming in, he has not even one review, you shouldn't trust that. So I think it's the different thing that he can do on his side to make sure that he's um, having people who are basically, you know, used to and want to have those reviews so they can continue to rent and use the app. Um, I'm not sure what he does. Um, but it seems like from not only myself and my other neighbors, whatever you're doing is not working. And it's concerning, um, like I said, I've only been here for five years and I have some phenomenal neighbors like uh, if, if Amazon drops off a package, I'm getting the call within thirty minutes like, hey, you got something on your front porch. Or hey, you know, somebody was at, at your front door looking for you. I get all those type of calls. So um, that's, that's what this neighborhood is about. We're out, we're looking for, looking out for each other. And then when you got a home that nobody's um, from for living in and it's being rented out. And then you have these wild parties and you're having um, people filling up trash cans and you have people fighting in front of your house. That's not what we, that's not what our neighborhood is about. And you know, when I have family come over and they see something like that, they're like, wow, you, this is where you live. This is how this neighborhood is. And that's what I, that's not the reflection that, that I want to put out. And I'm, I'm, I'm a big advocate of people buying in this area. There's a house down the street for sale and I'm on Facebook, I'm contacting Realtors like, hey, this is a great neighborhood. We all look out for each other. You should get people to come over here. So that's just my, my um, still, like I said, when that, that fight over the neighbor house, that was my. So um, and then, so the last thing I want to say is, the owner of that house, he's, he's, it's not like he's not responsive. Um, like my other neighbor said, when people call us, most of the time he gets back to us. But once again, like I said, whatever you're doing to, to rent to these people from Airbnb, it's not working as well.
Thank you very much for your comments and all of the comments. Um, I completely understand. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Okay, since there are no other items, this item is going to be sent to the full council next week without recommendation. And the public hearing will be closed.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Motion to sound without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number eleven, special use permit two forty-one Tacoma for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N three R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. Is there anyone here to speak about this, this pass, I'm sorry, this property on Tacoma? Okay, since we have no speakers, we will send this without recommendation.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Motion sent without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Item number twelve, special use permit two seventy-three Tacoma for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N three R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Yes, John, I'm here. I wasn't sure if you were calling me on the previous items. I apologize.
No, that's, that's okay, John. I understand. Is there, besides the applicant, is there anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, hearing none, we can move on.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Motion to sound without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number thirteen, special use permit four forty-three West Ferry for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N two R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck. This item is open. This is for four four three West Ferry. Um, is anyone here to speak on four four three West Ferry? And I believe this item was incorrectly marked Delaware District when it is in the Niagara District, I believe.
Hi, uh, my name is Carlos Hoyos and uh, I live across the street from this property. Um, I think the Airbnb started out last year, uh, last summer uh, being utilized. And I haven't had the extent of problems like uh, some of the people that spoke at the Avery property. Uh, but I guess if recommendations like that could be made uh, to prevent things like that from happening in the future, uh, that'd be greatly appreciated. Um, there was a few times where there was big college parties or, you know, college age kids that seemed to rent the Airbnb. Uh, and it was a little concerning last year, especially because of COVID. Uh, you know, obviously no social distancing, nobody wearing mask. But I mean, I guess that's coming to an end, but just the idea that there's no way to regulate those sort of things and they're just kind of happening in the neighborhood sometimes, it's a bit alarming. But uh, yeah, that's my two bits on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Which is in Councilmember, Majority Leader Rivera's district. Okay, Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I, since I didn't know it was in my district, I was kind of happy for a while there. Um, I, I'd like an opportunity to speak to the applicant uh, and find out a little bit more about the applicant. So we're going to close the public hearing and then we're going to send it without recommendation.
Motion to close public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck. Motion to send without rec, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Next item.
Item fourteen, special use permit two thirty-five Whitney for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N two R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. This is for two thirty-five Whitney for a non-owner occupied Airbnb in the Eloquent District. Is there anyone here to speak on two thirty-five Whitney? Is the applicant here to speak on two thirty-five Whitney?
Uh, yes, Matt Wickert is here.
Okay. Um, Matt, if you can just give a quick, I see the council president is here. Uh, if you have a quick synopsis of the property real quick, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely. Uh, two thirty-five Whitney uh, is a completely renovated um, home, single-family, single-floor home, two-bedroom, two-bathroom. Uh, we purchased the property in February. Uh, it's on a great street, beautiful landscape. Uh, it is, it's a two-bedroom, two-bathroom. Um, hearing some of the concerns, um, my wife and I moved here about a year ago. We just bought our, our, our home uh, on Harvard Place a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we fell in love with Buffalo and we, we have a restaurant and an Airbnb on the coast of Maine. And we wanted to replicate that here. We had an amazing time a year ago um, discovering the city uh, and we're never going to leave. Um, and so we, we come from a background of being uh, Airbnb super hosts and our property in Maine is a plus property, which is the highest tier uh, property that they, that they have. So they inspect the property. Uh, we have well-established guidelines in place to not allow partying, which is why we restrict occupancy to no more than four people. We do review all reservations uh, as they come in and we let everybody know that we are in the neighborhood. Uh, and we, we do stay in contact with everyone. Uh, just as an aside, um, I would suggest maybe the council or someone look at the city of Palm Springs, California. They, they have enacted a, like a, a citywide or region-wide policy on behavior uh, that kind of goes beyond just the permitting of Airbnbs, but also universal quiet hours, things of that nature. That kind of makes it, might make it easier for Airbnb hosts to um, to have a uniform set of rules that they enforce. I believe like you can't hear noise off the property line after ten PM, things like that. Um, and I'm happy to share that information. Um, you know, we, we use that as a baseline for what we, what we do. We back up to a boys and girls club uh, park. We're very aware of the community. We've been over and introduced ourselves to the neighbors. They'll have all of our phone numbers. Um, and, and you know, we, we look forward to, to the possibility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion, anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay. Motion to close.
Motion close public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. And Council President, the motion is to.
Send without rec. Uh, that gives, if anybody else in the neighborhood wants to be heard, maybe who wasn't on the public hearing. Um, I know that I did get an email uh, on this. I'd like to talk to the owner. He does seem to be, I mean, I'm very familiar with Airbnbs. If he's uh, you know, has the other one and it's in that condition, I'm sure that Matt would put this one in that one. So I'm inclined to approve, but I'd like to send it without rec. So if anybody in that neighborhood uh, needed to weigh in, that they could.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Council President. As you know, I live pretty close to this. Uh, Whitney is a wonderful street and they did a wonderful job redoing that property. And you know, as not just the uh, local council member, but the, uh, the guy that walks around all the time and, and you know, keeps an eye on everything, I, I hope that he'll be a good steward and he has a wonderful property. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thanks. Uh, Mr. Chair, can I um, ask Corporation Counsel um, if she's on? Because in the discussion, I think you're right, we're going to see more and more of these. Um, for instance, the Avery one, if, if someone had already opened up and then they come for an application, can they, can we deny them based on that?
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. The ordinance amendment that we did, I want to say it two years ago, is very detailed. And we, uh, we do have um, reasons and grounds for denial. Most of them are around um, noise, the noise ordinance and the violation of the noise ordinance, the amount of um, I would say complaints that we have received through police um, connections and contact. And um, and also what these individuals actually do on the property and the premises, how responsive the owner is as well. So if uh, the owner is as well. So if, um, so, you know, in the, in the ordinance, it's pretty detailed. I think we tried to cover a lot of our basis when we, when we did that ordinance review two years ago. So there are grounds for, um, denial in the future, even if someone would have, um, already had, um, a license.
So, and, um, I know, um, the chairman, Chairman Fairlado, you, you have, I think you were the one who put all that together, the licensing.
With others.
So I, I won't mess with this, but I think that, um, Mr. Wickert's, um, uh, offering of some other, uh, ways of, um, kind of regulating this, uh, maybe you would take a look at it. I think that's real interesting.
I think it's a very good point by the council president and, um, we have several, we, like many, several other cities, we're struggling with what to do with Airbnbs. And before we had some ordinance, there was nothing. And there was, there was nothing at all. So any property in the city, um, could have been an Airbnb with no real, no enforcement mechanism at all from the city to stop anything. So we put, we put this ordinance on the books. And I, I think it's always worth looking at things and there's ways to improve things, whether it's through legislation or permits and inspections or anything. I think it's always important to, to be able to look back at anything and I think it's a very good idea.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by council member Noakowski.
Motion to sound without recommendation.
Seconded by council member Golumbeck.
Item number 15, special use permit 1010 aka 1006 Elmwood for tavern, outdoor dining and live entertainment in N2 C-Zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by council president Pridgen. Before the applicant speaks on this item, um, I just wanted to let everyone know this item did go to the planning board two weeks ago. The planning board recommended that it's approved with several conditions. The conditions that it was recommended to be approved for is that it, the patio is closed at 11 during the week and 12 on the weekend, that there's no outdoor music. And also that the, there are no trash receptacles kept on the, kept on the patio. And those recommendations that they made are the same recommendations that they have made for every bar and restaurant that have opened. Uh, I'm aware of, um, for front patios, at least, I don't know, for several years. Um, so with that being said, those are the conditions that were proposed. The applicant, if you can give us a very brief, uh, synopsis of the project, that would be great. And then we have at least two or three neighbors that would like to speak on it.
Hello, everyone. Josh Mullen here. Um, thank you for giving me the time and your, uh, your moments here. Just wanted to give you a few things. We are looking to open up the old JP Bullfeather space, the 1010 Elmwood to be called, what would now be known as Jack Rabbit. We want to do a neighborhood pub, nothing too crazy from beyond what was there initially. Um, I come from an extensive background of working for the Shatzel organization, as well as a couple of my partners. We come from the Terrace, Thin Man. Um, and one partner, Leesel, is from Panorama on Seven in Buffalo proper. So we come with a combined about 30 years of restaurant industry experience. We hope to bring this back to a vital part of the neighborhood. My first apartment was a 1019 Elmwood, 14222 is a neighborhood I fell in love with. We all are in love with it. And then working on this project for a couple of years, we're doing it all with our own money and we're doing it in the best way that we see fit to serve the neighborhood. We want to be an intricate part of it. Uh, we've made friends with all of our neighbors, all the businesses around. Um, we look forward to meeting our residential neighbors a bit more than we have. And, um, like Joel said, we are completely understanding and fine with the hours on the patio. We have no intention of having any outdoor speakers. And we don't intend on, uh, becoming disruptive to the beautiful neighborhood that we're in, in any way.
All right, thank you. I know Peter is here to speak on this. So Peter, we'll go with you and then we'll open it up to other neighbors.
Uh, counselor, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, first, I have absolutely no objection. Bullfeathers was here before I bought. The objection I have is to do with the outdoor dining. When Bullfeathers was there, they stopped the dining at 10 o'clock. However, they didn't shut the door. So the place was full of people standing, drinking, smoking, and as drunks do, converse at about the same level as a jet engine. It made difficulties for sleeping and we were unable to resolve the situation with the past owner. Lot of bad blood in the area. The restriction that he suffered was at 10pm. I'm ambivalent about that. I think 10pm during the week, 11 on the weekends. But when this is over, the door be locked, so it's not going to be used. Now, Josh, my fellow speaker on this, I read somewhere on Facebook that they were gonna open the front of the building similar to JT's. Totally against that because the, the window over my right shoulder is 150 feet from the front wall of Bullfeathers. Josh Allen can travel further than that and voices travel further than Josh Allen can travel. So my objection is to the use of that after 10pm at night. And then the fact that it'd be used at all after 10pm. In other words, it have its access locked. And other than that, I think, uh, you know, looking forward to having him in the area and I was a customer in the past, I'll be a customer in the future. For the opportunity to talk today.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Josh, we'll come up to you at the end. I'd like to see if there's anyone else here that would like to speak on this item. The, are the O'Neills on this call? Okay, uh, I don't see the O'Neills here. Josh, I know you, you had, I, I know you had went to the planning board. Do you have any? Did you, do you have any plans for the, for changes to the structure?
Our landlord is replacing the windows on the front and north side of the building with accordion style opening windows, similar to what you see at Colter Bay. So those will be open air. We understand that the neighbors are around and similar to how we ran things at Thin Man with live music. We're prepared to close those windows at the hours that were expected to be quiet as to not affect our neighbors. During the day, we really look forward to having the open air concept, again, being more a part of the neighborhood that we love.
Okay, Josh, just so we're on the same page. So there's the, the accordion style windows that would be directly adjacent to the patio?
Yes.
Okay, and you, when the, when the patio is not open outside of those hours, the plan is to have those windows closed, so the patio won't be open and accessible outside of the patio hours.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, and just a, for a point of clarification, I know you addressed this at the planning board, but you're gonna be open for lunch as well?
Yes, lunch and dinner, um, Tuesday through Sunday. And lunch is on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, um, any other comments?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm sorry, be, go ahead.
Uh, I'm totally opposed to opening, uh, windows facing onto the street. This is a residential area and there is more residences here than there are bars and that's the way it should stay. Take the noise inside, stay in there with it. Thank you.
Thank you. The O'Neills, I believe you are here now. Mr. O'Neil, are you here? Not anymore. Um, okay. That being said, we're gonna send this, uh, we're gonna send this without recommendation next week. The, um, just so.
Excuse me, councilman, this is John Delgado. I, I, my name should be, should be on the list.
You have the floor.
Ah, thank you very much. Uh, you know, I, I live in, uh, I'm Bidwell, not far from Peter. I share a lot of the same, uh, views as Peter. It's really, uh, you know, for me, I wish we had many more, uh, taverns in, and restaurant facilities, uh, on Elmwood Avenue, uh, in the village. But, you know, there's the bittersweet and, and I think everybody like Josh wants to put his best, best foot forward. It, the funny thing is, is that once you, you open, you know, once you start the process, the concern for me is, is how do we, how do we regulate? How do we monitor? Is there anything in place? And Josh, no, no offense to you and, and, and what you're, uh, you're promising and pledging to do. But, you know, how, how does the city monitor this? Is there a condition for the use permit? And whereby if, if what was agreed upon, uh, is, uh, suddenly it starts to grow from, let's say, 10 o'clock to 10:30, from 10:30 to 11, and then it grows and it grows and it grows. And then wha- what does it take, what do the neighbors need to do? What do we need to do to say, hey, we chopped the deal here? This is what we all agreed to do and I plan on being a customer of yours as well, Josh. Uh, and, and where's that, you know, that happy medium? Uh, you know, it's really tough because when you live in a mixed-use neighborhood, uh, it depends on which use you are. You know, if you're in the commercial side of it, you want to open the gates and let everybody in. And then when you become on the residential side of it, we have a tendency to try to shut the gate behind us and stop everything from happening. So my concern would be, I'm all for this. I can't wait until they open. My concern is, is how is it regulated? How do we make sure everybody's holding on to what it was that they agreed to do?
Thank you, Johnny. Very good points. Um, there is a mechanism to revoke a special use permit. Um, corporation counsel is on this call. Karen, could you speak to that a bit more, please? The process of special use permits, enforcement, revocation, et cetera?
Yes, sure. Assistant corporation counsel Karen Gordon. There is a, a process and that it processes normally taken place through, um, our third floor with permits and inspection. I would advise, um, that in a, in a situation where the individual applicant is not in compliance with uh, the conditions, for instance, the time of closing and so forth on, um, the special use permit, you make that, um, complaint to permits and inspection. Permits and inspection will go out, they would inspect it. And if that's the case, they would call them in for, uh, a review. Um, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut whatever those complaints are. And so they will be given a, an opportunity to speak to permits and inspection. Um, and we, um, the law department normally have a representative, um, in those positions as well that would, um, listen to both sides and make a final determination. So there's a process, um, once their condition's placed on them, um, and it goes through permits and inspection office on the third floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Uh, can I just ask another question about music? I'm sorry, this is John Delgado again. Somewhere, I thought I heard that what they were wanted to do is bring live music in. Is that? When we talk about music, is there, uh, defined definition in music? Is it live music? Is it, you know, piped-in music? Uh, can we get clarification on that?
I know that, John, that's a good question. I know the Department of Permits and Inspections has different definitions for live music, DJs playing music, jukeboxes, et cetera. I know, um, one of the conditions that the planning board said was no music on the patio, um, that there would be no music outdoors. So, did, Karen, do you have the different types? Are you aware of the different types of music licenses? Because I know there's several different ones.
No, I don't know of the different types of the, of music license. And, and usually when a license, a special use permit is granted, um, you're correct, uh, planning board would normally be specific and tell them what they can and cannot have. In this situation, if they told them no, I'm not sure if they said no live music, right? Um, sometimes they may say no live music, but they can have a jukebox on the inside, um, and that will be fine. But I'm not too sure, so I would have to look into it to give you any more specifics.
Okay, so I believe on this specific one, the application for live music would include, um, would include live music, uh, DJ, jukebox with, with no speakers or anything outdoors.
All right, so nothing outdoor. And Peter brought up that if you have these accordion type windows, uh, then, you know, and the doors are open, whether it's, I mean, live, you start getting the live music. Of course, this doesn't make any difference, right? If it's live or if it's DJ, depending on the volume set on the speakers or what have you, is gonna determine how much noise it's gonna be. Listen, and again, this is John Delgado. Look, it, 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 here's, here's a delicate balance in all of this. We wait all year, man, for that spring, that summer, that warm Indian fall, and we love being outdoors, you know? And, and the delicate balance is, is I would love to be able to sit out there and have a glass of wine at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. I think that the music component i- i- is, is, would be the biggest threat to a peaceful, a peaceful way for all of us to get around. And, 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 and I just don't know. I, I don't want to say no, but at the same time, um, you know, I, I want it to be really thoroughly regulated. And Josh, I would say to you that it's kind of, you know, what, what will the volume be? What, how much noise would be broadcast outside? W- will that music component, will that music component just spoil the whole thing? Where, and, and I don't know what, you know, what your clientele base is going to be. And, and, and background music is one thing, party music, dance music is another. Which brings up another point.
I appreciate that. So Josh, I just have a question. Would, if you can just say the general genre of the type of music that you think you'll be having and then also regardless of the, uh, regardless of the type of music or the means of which the music is played, whether it's, whether it's a jukebox or live music or a DJ, the city of Buffalo has a noise ordinance so that it can't, I believe it's five decibels over ambient level. I know if corporation counsel Karen Gordon is here, um, if you can just check into that noise ordinance. So I know it doesn't matter, the genre, the type, it's, that ordinance is still in place. But Josh, if you can just speak to that real quick, it's not that the genre is relevant, but that question was asked, what type of music will be playing? So I would just like to give you the opportunity to discuss that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thanks for all you guys' concerns on this. Completely understood and heard. I am a career musician, first and foremost. So music is everything to me. And that's one of the main reasons that we want to do this. The reason that I moved to Buffalo in 2005 is because I was in a band under Robbie Gu, or Robbie Takecak from the Goo Goo Dolls under his record label. I moved to Buffalo because of the music scene. I moved to 1034 Elmwood Avenue because of the music scene. And that's one of the reasons that I've always loved this town. With that said, we are considerate to our neighbors. We are understanding that we have a business to run and we don't want to upset our community. We positioned our stage area in the northeast corner of the restaurant. So any of our projected sound that would be going towards our customers are going directly away from the corner that has both windows. We did this intentionally as to not leave music out onto the street. Uh, again, no speakers outside, um, as far as.
I, if I can go back in time, I would, when I were talking.
Just press mute whoever's speaking. Thank you.
Sorry, I lost my train of thought. As far as.
Nothing on the patio.
Nothing on the patio. Um, as far as the genres go, that we're gonna be a little bit diverse. We're gonna have some folk bands. We're gonna have some rock bands. At no point throughout this process have we tried to be dishonest about our intentions. Uh, it's a major component of our business model to include, incorporate live music. We can and will do this responsibly. Uh, our landlord has been very wonderful as far as putting soundproofing insulation throughout the entire building. That building was already incredibly solid and now it's even more. We've done sound tests and we're very confident that although we will be having live music performed, it will not be obtrusive to the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. So is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item before we move forward?
Well, I just gotta come back again one more time, Joel, if you don't mind, councilman.
John, you have the floor.
All right. Well, it, it's just, I, I, I think that, that we gotta give a lot of consideration to the, uh, and I love music too. I love music too. And, and, and I'm almost feeling bad speaking a little bit, you know, sounding more like a little against it, only because it, it, it's risky. I mean, when I start thinking about music and live music and if it's gonna be amplified or is it gonna be acoustical? And are there gonna be drums? I'm a drummer myself. And, 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 you know, soundproofing and so on and so forth. I, I think Josh, and I say to Josh, I say to the council, I think there needs to be, i- if we're gonna go with this, there needs to be a completely open mind to, almost to the point to where this is gonna be a, a, a probation type of a situation. We're gonna see how this thing works. And if it really doesn't work, then we need to make adjustments. I don't know. I think once you say okay to music and you got this five-decibel thing in place, okay, well, it's five decibels, but music travels in different ways and it's, it's just, I just hate to see the whole thing go south because of music. And at the same time, I hate to say no to music if it could be really what we hope it to be. So everybody, please, I think, consider this. Consider it being almost like a probationary thing where. it being almost like a probationary thing where, all right, we're gonna go with this, but with the understanding that it's actually gonna be a trial and you got a chance to prove it out. That's it. And I've had enough time and I thank you so much for giving me as much time as you have.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, um, Josh, I know we talked about the condition, or I, I, it wasn't brought up at the planning board. I know we talked about the, making sure the patio is, the windows are closed with, according to the same hours of the patio. Uh, is that something that you would be in agreement to uh for as an added condition? I think you're on mute.
Apologies, trying to keep the feedback down for everybody. Um, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. If we have something going on in there that the volume is gonna be obtrusive to our neighbors, if the windows are open, then the window should be closed.
Okay, so hearing no other speakers, but first we'll close the public hearing.
Motion closed public hearing.
Seconded by Council Member Noakowski. Um, for this item, it's going to the council next week. I am going to recommend that it gets approved with the conditions that were put on by the planning board and also adding the condition that the accordion windows are closed at the same time the patio, so the patio is not accessible at those hours. And we're also going to, before it gets voted on next week, also look into um other stuff related to the noise. But that is the plan at this point, what the planning board did recommend, and then also adding on to the, the condition that we just spoke about. Thank you, everyone, for attending this public hearing.
Motion to approve with conditions set by the planning board and the council member.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Is that it?
Next item, we actually, we, we have a motion to revisit the two um Airbnbs on Tacoma. We have someone who would like to speak on those.
Uh, what items were they?
Bethany, the two on Tacoma were items.
Item number eleven and twelve.
Motion to revisit items in eleven and twelve.
Seconded by Council Member Gullambeck. So we have been joined by a Mike Muscarella who would like to speak on those items. I don't believe the applicant is still here. Um, so Mike, you, you have the floor for three, for three minutes.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the time. I was unable to uh get in early enough on the meeting. The questions I, there are concerns I have is I live in the neighborhood and parking is um, um, a very difficult situation as well as the transient nature of um a non-owner occupied property having um, I understand the business aspect of it. Um, where, where, if somebody can give me the background, where is this at this point? Has it been recommended or is there um not recommendations to the properties being uh given the special use permit at this point?
So Mike, we had, there was no one here to speak on either item, so we sent them without recommendation. But since you were unable to join in on the Zoom, I'm very happy to set something up with, to reach out to the applicant so that there can be conversations with um you and the applicant before the item is voted on. And we, so we called this item, I don't know, earlier in the meeting, maybe a half an hour, forty minutes ago. And since you weren't able to join us, we sent it without recommendation. But I think you bring up some very valid concerns and I think those should be answered before it gets voted on potentially next Tuesday.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, just give me notification when that could be arranged and I'd be glad to have discussion uh with whomever.
My office will reach out to the applicant um either after this meeting or tomorrow and then be in touch with you directly.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion. Motion stands.
Motion stands. And I believe those are all the items. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Council Member Gullambeck.